That's told neither here nor there, but that's.
Are you guys all set, Tom, or need a?
Uh, I think we're just about set.
I'll wait for everybody to sit down. Okay, all set?
Okay.
All right.
I'll count you in. And five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening, welcome to the regular select board meeting of Tuesday, July 5th, 2022. We're an open session, we are being both audio and video recorded, and we will start by taking the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple of announcements to start the meeting. It's actually modestly hard to believe, but that our region is in a level-one drought situation. So just be aware that water is important, and if you want to go to the water conservation page of the mass government website, you can learn a couple of things about how to conserve water. Second issue is the town clerk. Tomorrow is Kathy Ingram's last day as town clerk. We wish her quite well on her new journey. As of July 7th, the town clerk's office hours will be 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for birth, marriage, and death certificates. Appointments are greatly appreciated by calling 565-4103 or emailing the townclerk@townclerk@longmeadow.org. For dog licenses, tag, cell permits, the office will be open from 8:15 to 4:30 on Monday through Thursday, and 8:15 noon on Fridays. Marriage intentions will not be offered in the office for foreseeable future. I don't know exactly what that means, for people who want to get married, but that's the case. We do wish Kathy lots of good luck in her new position. And then, speaking of new positions or old positions, we did have some certificates for two folks who have given an awful lot of time and effort to this. We have one for Lawrence Rubin, who served on the Board of Assessors for a long time. I'm not quite sure of the number of years just yet, but it was not triple digits, but well into the double digits. And we also have a certificate of appreciation for Albert Lasco, who for thirty, at least we think thirty years, was head of Conservation Commission. And these folks deserve these certificates, as they really have put their heart and soul into the well-being of Long Meadow. And they will be missed on both those committees, I am sure. And so, let's see, we now are moving into select board reorganization, and along the lines of people leaving, I'm going to be leaving as of this, the committee, as of July 18th, after our next meeting will be my last meeting, so therefore I'm not going to be chair, and therefore I would, as it's reorganization meeting, I nominate Josh Levine to be chair of the Long Meadow Select Board. Second?
Second?
Okay, a motion and a second. Any discuss? All those in favor?
Wait, wait a second. My discussion is about your comment. What was your comment?
My comment is, I'm not, I'm leaving. We're moving, we're literally moving out of town.
Congratulations, good luck, whatever. I don't know.
And so, but we're moving out of town after our next board meetings. I will still be a resident of Long Meadow through July 18th. We'll make it through to July 18th meeting, and then, and then there's a whole conversation of, I talked to Kathy about town elections and all this.
Yeah, we have to call a special town election.
Yes, and apparently hooking on with the state elections is problematic, but.
Right, we can't, we can't do that.
So, yes.
It'll be a tough year for four people.
No, we want, you definitely, no, it's a hundred, it's a hundred-day notice or something, that's what's in the town charter.
Yeah, well, thank you.
So, yes, now it was, yes, I was not expecting quite this to happen. So, we have, that's, anything else on that one?
No, no, I just.
After twenty, after twenty.
Try to sneak that under the radar.
Well, after twenty-seven years in town, it was, we decided to make a change. So, we have the motion.
That was impressive steamrolling.
You know, can't put anything by a mark. So, anyway, so we have a motion second for Josh as chair. All those in favor? Congratulations. And I would also move Mark Goldbe to be vice chair.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that one? All those in favor? And then, and the new guy gets to be clerk, is that correct?
That's tradition. Not, that's tradition, but.
That's tradition. I, I move that Dan Swerg for clerk on the select board.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Do you understand what that, I hope you understand what that entails.
That means you do all the work.
You have to take all the minutes.
I think I signed one extra thing last year.
So, I turn the meeting over to you, Josh.
All right, thank you, Steve, and I'm sure we'll have lots of plaudits to talk about in thirteen days. All right, moving right on to board and committee interviews. First, let me see, for the building demolition committee, a three-year term expiring 2025, we have Dan O'Malley.
Good evening.
Evening, Dan. If you could introduce yourself for the record, including your address.
Yeah, I'm Dan O'Malley, 68 Fair Hill Drive, Long Meadow. I've been involved with the Building Demolition Commission from day one, and any questions?
How long has it been since day one?
Two thousand and six, I believe it was. It's a very little-known commission in town.
And how many buildings have you demolished, or whatever they were?
We don't demolish any of them.
It's a misnomer. It should be named the Building Demolition Delay Committee, right?
That's actually what it should be.
So, for the, for the old DPW site, is that something that you guys would, no?
Actually, it would be. It should be. There is a, that is the old railroad station, believe it or not. So, that building, the original building, which was renovated, the structure is still there, and it predates 1901, so that would come under our consideration.
There's an intent, intent to ever tear that, to tear that down, though.
Well, there is an intent. We've heard that there is an intent, but it does cost money, like everything else, so we'll see when that happens.
I thought somebody wanted to move it.
Excuse me?
I thought somebody wanted to move the building.
Somebody did, until they realized how much it would cost.
Make it an ice cream station, it worked out for East Long Meadow. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, Dan, people may make light of it, but it's a, this came out of the, the teardown of a building on Laurel Street and Forest Glen, that, you know, if somebody sold the building, it was a house that was, I don't know, maybe a hundred years old or something, and to build four, four houses there, and so it's, it's an important building because it, important committee because it does potentially allow the town a chance to stop the demolition of historic buildings in town, as you indicate. So, I guess the question is, what do you have, you know, this committee doesn't meet on a regular basis, I assume, or?
No, there's a requirement, I mean, we meet once a year. But what happens is, if there is, if an owner of a structure before 1901 applies for a building demolition permit from the building inspector, then we get involved. Not until then.
And the inspector can't issue the permit unless you approve?
If it's a structure built before 1901, yes. And there's time limits involved with our responses, et cetera.
Well, thank you for your involvement.
Well, thank you.
And we'll vote on our, at our next meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Dan.
And thanks for having me first.
For building committee, there's a three-year term expiring 2025, and Conservation Commission, a three-year term expiring 2025, and one associate expiring, one-year term expiring next year. Kieran Mulkey.
Hello, good evening.
Hi, Kieran. If you could introduce yourself and say your address in town.
Yep, my name is Kieran Mulkey. I live at 1607 Long Meadow Street, rather known as the Big Red House that's still under construction.
Okay, and I've been on a number of these interviews where people are applying for two committees, and Mark always asks which one they want to do, unless the rest of the board, since I'm fairly new. Is there a policy against being on more than one committee?
Only the finance committee can't be a member of any other committee, other people can't.
All right, and so you're interested in both committees, or is this either or?
Both, so for the Conservation Commission, reapplying. I've been a part of that for two and a half years now, and then the building one, completely applying new.
Okay. Have you been enjoying your work on the Conservation Commission?
Yeah, you know, I've always enjoyed it, you know, for my undergrad and masters, I had, you know, special kind of areas in, you know, marine biology, environmental science, so it's always just been a passion kind of thing for me, to always, you know, dive into that, and since now I live at 1607, I have the community gardens right behind me, so I've already had plenty of people shoot off ideas for the Conservation Commission, so they're already loving it, and they know my name pretty well.
Okay, what brought your interest in the building committee?
Oh, yeah, so for my line of work, I'm a project manager for IT and construction management, and, you know, I've been doing that for three and a half years now, and, you know, also working on my own house, I've just kind of become more, you know, interested in, you know, kind of the building committee, and seeing what goes around that, because I've always had a strong passion of, you know, what needs to be done for, you know, kind of the areas of each house, because I know there's a big portion of, you know, historical stuff, you need to meet certain criteria, and kind of what goes into, you know, the nuts and bolts of a house, or a building, or anything like that, so I kind of want to expand on that. It's really more of an opportunity for me to kind of expand my horizon, I'd say, plus along, you know, my line of work, you know, past that, I also work with multiple other towns in my line of work. I work with Braintree, I work with Town of Milton, and I work with a couple towns up in New Hampshire, so I've kind of seen what they've done, you know, municipality-wise, and I think I can bring some, you know, areas of, I guess, knowledge, not the expert level yet, but knowledge into that committee and board.
Have you spoken with any members of the building committee?
I have not.
Mark? Yeah, I was, I was going to ask the same question. I suggest that you talk to at least Mary, Mary Beth Bergeron, and maybe some other folks at the Permanent Building Committee, because what you're going to find, I think, is that they're involved in non, non-routine things now that we're not building, you know, the adult center or building a DPW, they're looking at a lot of renovation repairs and appropriate kinds of things like that, so my suggestion would be, be careful what you ask for, you might just get it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Steve?
You're on the Conservation Commission now.
Yes, correct.
So, Patrick Carnehan was here, he got this certificate of, he took a conserva, there's a Conservation Commission, like, study course that he took and got certified, and they sent the letter saying this is a great thing, and apparently he was the first guy on the commission to have done that, so is this something that you would like to, he thought it was a requirement, actually, so.
There's a number of courses, I think, six or seven.
Yeah, this was, this was a big deal, so is that something that you would consider doing as well, since it seems to really, I would assume, broaden its horizons?
No, I one-hundred percent, actually, once we found out Pat had it, I actually didn't know about it, unfortunately, I'll say that, and be honest about it, but I'm actually looking to it right now, just I think the next classes for it are offered starting in August, because I missed the July 1st deadline, or something like that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, LEXO brought a lot of continuity to the Conservation Commission, and I think that's, we're going to need to fill that, fill his shoes, and I look forward to having people who have taken the course and gotten deep into it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kieran.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Good night. All right, next up, also for the Conservation Commission, Brendan Ireland. Oh, not here, so we will move on, get him another time. For the Capitol Planning Committee, a three-year term for Megan Scully, not here, okay. Council on Aging Board of Directors, a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2025, Judy, and I won't put your last name. Yaffi. No, that wasn't my guess, didn't want to go far. If you could introduce yourself and say your address, please.
Hi, my name is Judy Yaffi, and I live at 196 Bel Air Drive, and I've lived in the community, I'd say, good thirty-five years.
Judy, are you, are you applying for an appointment or a reappointment?
Reappointment.
How long have you been serving on the board?
I think, maybe close to six years.
Okay, and what have you, have you found it rewarding? What's the?
It's been wonderful. I, we actually, I, I started working, or on the committee, when we were in the old building, and we were beginning to develop the, the new adult center and the concept, and working with everybody together. This group, the Council on Aging, has really been instrumental in getting the adult center going, and they've really worked very hard on it, and it was very rewarding for me to be part of it.
Mark?
Judy, the elephant in the room. So, the elephant in the room is LAACF, Faloka, and the Council on Aging, and there are some people, and I'll put myself amongst it, that says that, that those three are oil, water, and something else that doesn't mix with oil and water, with sand. And so, the question is, not that you've got all the answers, but as the select board, we're sitting here saying, there's dysfunction there, how do we, how do we get function out of dysfunction?
Actually.
And I'm just asking for suggestions, because I know you, you just won one vote.
I know. I, I think, well, let me, let me start from the beginning, just so you have, you understand. When Faloka, when we needed to raise money for the new adult center, we went to Faloka before we formed the LAACF. Faloka would not change their bylaws, and they would only give their money for programs. Our money, the LAACF, not only raised money for, our goal was to become our own 501(c), so that we could raise money for both programs and furniture and other things that the new adult center needed, because there was no way that the money that we raised through the town, the fourteen, would have covered the cost of that. So, I was asked to be on this committee, and to help to raise funds for this. Faloka is a wonderful organization, they do give money, and a lot of their money was gotten because of the gift shop that they had, and now the gift shop is no longer there when we moved over. So, they are, they still are looking for donations, and they still do give to the adult center. It's, it's very nice to say that we have two organizations working to fund the adult center. You're not going to see that in most other Council on Agings across Massachusetts. We work together, but we had to form it for that reason, and we, we, you know, we do, we get along, because there's nothing not to get along. I think we've, you know, ironed out a lot of that, but that was the main reason why we, we formed the LAACF.
So, there's, there's been some comments, and I know that our town manager is looking into it, and let me just step back. One of the issues we've had in town is the interrelationship between the Long Meadow Cable Advisory Committee and LCTV, and the overlap of those boards, and are they truly independent boards? And the question then, it begs the question, is, is there overlap or conflicts between LAACF, Faloka, and the COA boards? And I don't have the answer to that, but we're trying to get an answer to that, and my question to you is, if push came to shove, and there was a determination, I, that, that there's, that there's a conflict, and you have to pick between one or the other, I like to think you'd pick the COA, and that we could still nominate you on, place you on the COA, maybe I shouldn't be putting you in the spot like that today.
You're right, you shouldn't.
But I, but I.
You're right.
It's, it's the elephant in the room, and I have to mention it because.
No, no, and I, you know, Mark, I'm glad you did, because I believe I did, we did, people on the LAACF did sign a conflict of interest form, so that we should be, and, and we actually have, Marie Angelitis is looking into it, to see if there is a conflict of interest to do that.
Right, and I think that, you know, we're going to get some definitive responses to whether there is or not, before we do any appointments, I think, I don't know if the whole board knows that, but, but that, we've got to, got to get those answers, because, and I, you know, like I said, the, the model, if you will, is the, is the, you know, Cable Advisory Committee with, with the LCTV, but we'll see what happens. I just want to let you know that.
Tom? Yeah, oh, sorry, I'm still thinking Steve's. No, so, you know, you mentioned the Cable Advisory Board and LCTV, and my understanding is that people were on both boards, everyone on one board was on the other board, and so that was the big issue that the lawyers pointed out to us.
And I don't see a conflict, because.
No, but I mean, but it isn't the same thing, where you have everybody on the Council of Aging is on Faloka, or on LCTV, you know, there isn't, it's, you know, it's, we'll look into it, we'll look into it, I, you know, I appreciate you being so open, I know that it, you could feel a little bit on the spot here, so.
No, that matters, no, and you know what? It's a very logical question, I know, I know.
Judy, it's not just you, I mean, we've got two or three other people that have, you know, that are in the same spot.
Oh, I know, I know, and we, we discussed it at the last, you know, board meeting, and, you know, what will be, will be.
Yeah, and I think that that is, is, you know, as a member of the board, you know, we hope that you will participate in all the discussions, and I know that you're not shy about that, so you're good, and, and that's how we'll get to the solution.
Great.
By having everyone participate, and we appreciate you stepping up to continue on the board, and being part of the discussion. It's always better to change things from the inside, rather than complain on the outside.
You're right, and I do, I do listen to a lot of it, which is great.
Yeah.
And we solve problems.
All right, thank you, Judy.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Judy.
Coming up next, on the Energy and Sustainability Committee, a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2025, Greg Link. Oh, Greg, huh? Okay. Parks and Recreation Commission, a three-year term expiring June 2025, Henry Robinson. Henry, if you could introduce yourself and say your address, please.
Henry Robinson, 53 Hillside Terrace.
Okay, Henry, are you, you're applying, this is a new appointment, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and what interests you about the Parks and Rec Committee?
So, like, my family, we're all Parks and, like, we're town pool people, we go to all the playgrounds, we play town teams, we do everything in town, and if I can do anything to help make that the best it can be, I'd like to volunteer for that.
Have you spoken with any members about the Parks and Rec Committee?
No, I have not. I don't know anybody who's on it.
Okay. I think that would be certainly a worthwhile thing, especially the Parks and Rec Committee had some exciting times recently.
Sure, yeah.
With the skate park, so it'd probably be useful to talk to them, make sure it's something you're interested in, want to do.
Okay.
And you're, you're involved with the Long Meadow Soccer Association?
Yep, for two, three years now. This year, I'm going to help run the in-town program, and, you know, just coordinate all that, and, so, just, you know, getting kids playing, and making sure everything's fair, and it's simpler than it probably seems, I don't, it's not that big of a deal, but it's just.
Hopefully.
It's important, and there's a lot of kids, soccer is the biggest sport in town, in terms of youth sports, I mean, even their spring season's bigger than any other team's fall season, so, yeah, it's a lot of organization.
Henry, thank you for applying, we appreciate it, we need all the volunteers we can get in town. I, just kind of, not so much for your benefit, because you're new here, but I think people need to understand that Parks and Recreation Department is, is a department of the town, and the committee is advisory to the director of the Parks and Rec Department, which is Barry Jarvis. So, yeah, you should talk to members of the board, but you should ought to talk to Barry Jarvis, who's over in Greenwood Center, and that's really where it goes, and I think that's, that's important, because, in my opinion, we've still got a vestige of people who thinks that they're the old, pre-19, or maybe pre-2000 elected Parks and Recreation Commission, and they're not. And, and so, the Parks and Recreation Committee is, is an arm of the select board, they defer to the select board, but they really defer their advisory to the Parks and Recreation Department Chair, and that often runs into some issues, because they aren't an independent organization that doesn't manage the town's direction for park and recreation. They certainly, you know, have a lot of input and can suggest things, but we run into trouble when, you know, speaking for Barry Jarvis, she finds herself, you know, with her boss telling her to go one way, and the Parks and Recreation Board telling her to go another way, and it's pretty clear now under our charter that she works for one person, and that's the town manager, and so, we, we'd love to have the Parks and Recreation Committee people participate and help out and advise, and give Barry the sense of what the people in the town want to do and want to have, but I just think it's important that you're out here, and it's not for you as much for everybody at home, to understand that Parks and Recreation Committee is advisory, and is not run the Parks and Recreation Department, because we've come a long way. And thank you for letting me say that.
Steve?
Yes, you know, we've spent a whole lot of money on the Wolf Swamp fields, and it was done for safety of the kids, safety of the kids. So, what would really pain me is, we've spent all this money for the safety of the kids, and we're going to now put a whole pile of stuff to kill anything that might be growing besides the grass on this, which I, I'm sure is not particularly safe for the kids running around on it. So, as, realizing it's not necessarily, you guys don't make the final decision about what's put on these fields, but I would really encourage you to, to, you know, see what other alternatives there are, I mean, work with DPW, but, I mean, the fact that we have these fields, and with the precise reason, well, it's all, it's all about the children, well, it's all about the children, we should not be poisoning them with the stuff that we're poisoning the other things with on it, and I'm not quite sure all the alternatives, but I know that there are some, and so, I would hope, as a member of that board, you would at least, you know, you would look into it and be your advisory self on it.
Yeah, I, I have one final, I guess we're all have a soapbox, but I'd like to speak coming.
Yeah, Parks and Rec.
So, I spent a lot of money on Wolf Swamp, we're going to have fantastic fields there. Our other fields, I think, can, DPW's stretched pretty thin, but our other fields can have some issues, and we have safety issues over there, and that's something that we need to be clear, that it should be a priority, to the extent we can make it one. I run on the Glenbrook Fields sometimes with the kids, and it's a wonder I don't roll an ankle, but we, hopefully we can get our other fields, get up to snuff. It's tough to do, but it's important. Well, in the monthly report we got from Parks and Rec, they talked about the soccer, or the lacrosse jamboree that took place, I don't know if you were driving through town, they had to close part of Bliss Street, and, and they used the fields from the school, high school, and so forth, and so, I know it's not, I think we've done it a couple times now, but one of the things, when we think about our role as a select board, is to look at all different parts of the community, and so, the business community, in the shops there, we're hoping, and I haven't, we need to find out some more on this, that they saw some extra business by all the folks who came into town for the jamboree, and, and so, as Parks and Rec looks at these sorts of situations, you know, I know that a lot of the businesses in town support the teams, you know, they regularly sponsor them for all kinds of things, and, and this would be a way for Parks and Recs to sort of, you know, reward the local businesses by having events there, versus, you know, Wolf Swamp is going to be a premier field, and I'm sure there'll be a lot of events there, but just think about some balance, I guess that would be the only thing I would think you.
You mean, like, location-wise?
Huh?
Like where the event's happening?
Yes, yeah, well, have you, have you thought about that at all, or is that?
Yeah, I remember when the Wolf Swamp fields were gonna be redone, people were talking about all the jamborees and all the, like, little invitationals that were gonna be lost because they didn't have a field to play on.
Yeah.
And, uh, where they would go and who would get the revenue from that, and I think now having two big fields and locations that are prime is great for the community.
And Tom, the, the jamboree wasn't the Parks and Rec sponsored, it was privately sponsored by the Long Meadow Lacrosse Association, I believe.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Not the Parks and Rec.
So it was just reported by, through the department?
Didn't, wasn't even, they didn't have a whole lot to do with it, they.
Okay.
We approved it.
They would, we approved it, but they would have re, they would have rented the fields no matter where they wanted to put it.
Where they put it, yeah.
Wolf Swamp, but it wa, they, it wasn't a Parks and Rec program, is what I was trying to say.
All right, well, they, they're, there may be people that come to Parks and Rec, uh, you know, talking about jamborees or different events that would bring a lot of out-town of, out-of-town visitors, and.
Yeah.
You know, you may wanna consider that as an option.
Yeah, and I wanna go back to the field thing. Fields is number one to me. I think the, the Glenbrook situation is, my kids play on it, everyone's falling down, it looks like a dust bowl, the sprinklers don't come on, it's like, it's all we had because Wolf Swamp's being redone, but it's not good enough for the amount of kids that play all the different sports there, so, uh, I don't know if Parks and Rec has anything to do with that, but the fields is a big issue for me.
All right, any other questions from the board? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate you applying. Uh, finally, Recycling Commission, Jeffrey Welch, uh, there's a three-year term expiring 2025, and an associate non-voting expiring 2023. All right, Mr. Welch, if you could introduce yourself and state your address.
Jeff Welch, 19 Allen Road, Long Meadow, Mass.
Okay, and, uh, is this a new appointment? You're seeking for the Recycling Commission?
No.
Oh, okay, reappointment?
Yep.
Okay, how long you been on the Recycling Commission?
About three and a half years. I moved to town in 2018, and I got on right after.
Oh, okay, impressive, great. And, uh, so what have you been doing on the Recycling Commission?
I think a couple of the main things that we do are, um, first of all, we have a great team, Arlene Miller and our commis, or, uh, Erwin Pers is great leader, uh, we have a good group, um, so it starts there, we have good people, but I think a couple of things we do are our annual shredding event, which Mr. Golden knows about, um, also our Earth Day events and kind of some one-off events that we do.
Okay, and, uh, so I know our, our costs are going up in, on recycling globally and in town. Does the commission touch on any of that, on the contracts that we sign, or where things go?
Uh, yeah, we touch on it, and I, I think, to be honest, it's more Mr. Pers and, and Arlene who kind of do that, but, um, but the whole committee is updated on it, yep.
Josh, I think the, actually, recycling is making money for the town, so.
Yeah.
The, the, the price that we get for cardboard in, glass, plastic, whatever we recycle is, continues to go up, and the Recycling Commission is doing a phenomenal job of pushing people to recycle. The less we put into, into landfill, the more we can recycle. We pay now a hundred and five dollars a ton or something like that for, for disposal of stuff, and we get paid, even if it's two bucks, we get paid to recycle. And so I think one of the things the Recycling Commission, Commission is trying to work on with the town is, is, if we will, enforcement of our trash rules and regulations, and, you know, so that people are recycling what they need to recycle and not, and not throwing them out, we pay a bundle of money for.
Yeah.
For trash disposal.
Uh, yeah, Tom, look, you said, do you, do you have any opinion about people recycling, um, waste from their food waste? You know, like, you know, we always have leftover vegetables, not necessarily meats and stuff like that, but perishable food, and it, it's, there's been a movement to start to collect those and have those recycled, and, uh, have you heard about that or talked about that?
Yeah, I think it's a huge issue. Something like forty percent of all trash is food waste, and, you know, there's, there's big business out there who, who wants to take municipal food waste. Um, I think we gotta look into that a lot further, yeah.
Oh, great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, and when you're looking into it, keep in mind, although we're not, we're not Berkeley Californian, Berkeley and San Francisco have mandatory food composting.
Yep.
You, you Massachusetts office.
Right.
And also, yes, and, uh, someone in Swambsco Memorial had, they actually, I mean, they're private guys, they'll, they'll sell you, you know, a, a five-gallon container, and, and they'll come by and pick it up, and so there are some ways to go, and I, yes, I encourage the commission to really look into that, it's fantastic.
Right, and, and their bags are all decomposable, like, they're plastic bags, you know, going to nothing, so. But the other thing is recycling that into compost, you know, I think, I mean, that's what I do with mine, I compost it, use it in my garden, but, um, it would be nice if we could have composting bins, you know, if the town could offer those to feed people, that would be nice, but.
Sure.
You know.
Well, they were, actually, they were offered during Long Meadow days, they're not, they're cheap, relatively inexpensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're offered now, they're about twenty-five dollars, yeah.
Yeah, they're offered twenty-five, yeah, so, okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Has your, has your group, um, you know, looked into doing a cleanup in the fall as well?
Um, yes, we, we kind of tag it along with Earth Day in April.
Yeah.
The shredding event is the, usually the first week or, or a couple of weeks in May. We're looking to do that again in the fall this year, so two of those, but a cleanup day, yeah, we could look into doing one in the fall as well, absolutely.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, moving on to resident comments. Uh, seeing none. Uh, any Select Board comments? Steve?
Uh, yes, uh, this is really for the residents of Long Meadow. Um, there was a very well-attended event for MEPA in terms of the pipeline that, um, EverSource wants to construct from Long Meadow Country Club to the Bliss Street Station in Springfield. There are soliciting comments from the public as well as from organizations, uh, through July 28th. I encourage everybody who is concerned about this issue to, uh, write to MEPA. Uh, actually, I don't have a, look, I'm not quite sure what's the best way to get in touch with them, but I think if you, uh, call town offices, you will be able to get, or direct it to the website where, uh, you should, uh, direct your comments. But MEPA will respond, they might not respond personally to you, but they need to, they pass on everything to EverSource, our questions, and, uh, EverSource needs to respond to it, and also be a very good practice trial run for, uh, folks. Because the next step in the stage will be the Environmental Sighting Board, which is the actual organization that says yay or nay to this particular project, and any comments that are sent to MEPA can also be sent to the EFSB as well. That's not to be done now because they haven't asked for any, any comments, but, um, whatever you say to MEPA can be used at a later date, and so I encourage residents to really, um, now is the time, and we got to, through July 28th, to, uh, make your opinions known and your questions asked, and hopefully be answered by EverSource.
Tom?
Yeah, um, I guess first I'd like to thank Steve for his service. Uh, I know you've been a volunteer on the town, you're on the Finance Committee for many years before the Select Board, and, uh, you know, your, your willingness to step up and be the chair as Mark Strange, you know, got another job, uh, you know, that was great of you to, to take that role, we appreciate it, and wish you luck in your new adventures.
Thank you.
Uh, and your wife, too, you know, they've both been.
We are going together.
Yes, good, good, and major contributors to, to the town.
There's, there's many concerns about it, yeah.
The other thing, yeah, I'm glad you didn't announce something that would surprise.
It would surprise Michelle, huh?
Yeah. Uh, the other thing is, I, I mentioned this at the Council of Aging meeting, is that, uh, everyone has heard of the Great Depression, you know, and some of us had parents who grew up during it, um, and what we're expecting, what we're experiencing now is the Great Resignation. We have a large number of people who are resigning from jobs all over the country and all over positions, and it has affected our town as much as it's affected businesses around, and, uh, you know, losing our town clerk is a big shock. We've lost a lot of other important folks, and, um, you know, the board, uh, you know, I mean, I feel as a board member and a little bit of research and talking to people I've done, that, um, it isn't anything the town is doing wrong. And I'm, we'll miss folks who, who leave us and hope we can find good replacements, and those of you who know anyone who would be a good town clerk, uh, please let us know. Uh, we need a CFO, we need a number of different positions, and all those are listed on the, uh, website for the town. Thank you.
Mark? Yeah, just a couple of things that, the, you know, generally I do reports on meetings I've been at representing the town, and there have been few because of the summer vacation, so it's been pretty, pretty quiet, I've been to a couple, but nothing significant to report. What I did want to do is just bring up for the Select Board a, a note I got from, um, somebody that, that we still have apparently unfinished business in the Charter Review Committee, and Dave Martell had asked me that we get that back on the agenda for this term. And so, Josh, I'll be working with you, and, you know, I've got some great detail of what, what we didn't cover, what we should. I know there's some areas that, that, you know, we, we didn't do intentionally, but, but I, I did want to just bring that up because I think it, it's worth mentioning that, that there appears to be some unfinished business at the Charter Review Committee. The other area that I think we need to get going on is, is this proposition two-and-a-half ceiling issue with the task force, and, and, uh, maybe we'll be talking about that when we get to committee assignments, but I think those are two areas that are pretty pressing on the, on the town.
Uh, and finally, just, I wanted to reiterate what Steve said about making comments to MEPA. It's not very often we get to, you get to speak your feelings on a giant government proj, a giant project, uh, to the government and actually make sure they're heard. Uh, this is our chance, and Long Meadow as residents, to, uh, speak up and, uh, do what we can to make sure the state knows how we feel about the pipeline, um, for or against, I suppose. Uh, any other Select Board comments? Dan?
Yeah, thanks, Josh. Um, so the, um, Varsity Boys Lacrosse Team won the state championship, uh, Division II State Championship. I think it might be the nineteenth, uh, state championship overall. Uh, they beat Bill Ricker on June 21st, uh, nine to eight in overtime thriller, so just wanted to congratulate the team on all their success.
Absolutely. Anything else? Uh, moving on to the Town Manager's Report. Lynn is not here this week, she's taken a deserved vacation. Uh, I will summarize what's in here. Um, Greenwood Pool, uh, the town has been working very hard to get additional lifeguards, and happily, uh, they're, have been able to do so, and the pool will now be open seven days a week, so that's great. Uh, there will be senior swim hours, Tuesdays and Thursdays from twelve to one, uh, so during those hours, uh, the pool will be reserved for senior use only. Uh, the Adult Center Pickleball Courts, repair work was started June 13th, and, uh, the courts will be closed while the work takes place, um, and this is all being done by the contractor to make up for, uh, so no further costs, um, but there, there was an initial application of a subsurface that was improperly put on, and the court service failed, so they are, uh, this is pushing back, uh, the final, the completion of the work till the end of July. Uh, there was park and conservation area cleanups, uh, there's been illegal dumping signs have been placed in, uh, locations in the meadows as well as a camera, and there'll be more cameras ordered, uh, and there's also trash recycling centers have been placed in the new parking area, and there's also, uh, signs near the, near Turner Park for carry-in, carry-out area. Uh, the town just simply does not have enough people to clean up these areas and urge residents, non-residents alike, to respect the, our town property and keep it clean. Uh, and finally, the, in Building Department news, the alternate electoral inspector saved a contractor's life on a site, a site, job site the week of June 6th. Uh, the alternate electrical inspector was approaching the house and noticed the contractor in distress in his car, and, uh, got him out and called 911, uh, and we're grateful for the, that action and, uh, for being in the right place. Uh, Mark?
Yeah, I just, I don't know if I'm gonna include this, but, uh, I'm part of this solar task force that she's put together, and I just wanted to make a comment that the group is making good progress. They've identified sites, we've been talking to, uh, the, our consultant Beth, who, who's looking at, uh, putting these together, and I think we've got a target for, uh, this, maybe the end of the summer or this fall by, of trying to get something out for people to start bidding on, on solar facilities, to install solar facilities throughout the town. I, I'd encourage people at home, if you have any input to that, please contact Lynn, you can contact me if you want to. Uh, specifically, the, the, there are some decisions that need to be made, the kinds of decisions that we're, we're being told we need to make, or should the town own all these facilities, or should they just lease them out, you know, which is always the buy versus lease kind of, kind of thing. Does the town want to be in the solar business or just make money renting it, and how do we want to, if you will, monetize the, the, the decisions? But those are all being worked through with, uh, with our, it's a very, very good group, uh, and, and I just wanted to make that comment.
Well, Steve will miss your solar experience when it comes to that, but I may be bugging you when we get there. Uh, moving on to old business, approval of meeting minutes.
I just had, uh, I just want to comment, um, you know, congratulating the folks who, who ran the lacrosse jamboree at the high school on May 21st. Um, I'm glad that went successfully, and, um, I didn't hear any complaints about it. The, the other thing is, there was something mentioned in the, um, you know, the, the report from the, uh, Long Meadow Police Department about delayed dispatch calls for service, and, you know, and they're trying to get, get under that, and, and, and one of the issues could be staffing, and, but I also wonder if, you know, if it has much to do with cell towers. I know that in, in the area I'm in town, all my calls go to Enfield, you know, it seems like I'm in a different area code, and I'm hoping that when they put some new, um, equipment up on the tower, the tennis court, that this would be eliminated, but that also could be part of the concerns when people have delays on dispatch, because if it goes to Enfield and then has to go to Chickapi, Westcom, and then it has to come to town, I mean, that's a, a, three different layers. Um, the other thing is, it, the comments about having more lifeguards is good work, and I appreciate that, the efforts made by the town manager and people in the Rec Department to get, uh, enough lifeguards. It is pretty competitive, um, so, nice job, thank you.
Okay, uh, on to approval of the meeting, old business, approval of meeting minutes from May 16th, 2022.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes of the May 6th, 2022 Regular Select Board.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
I can't.
You have to abstain.
Okay, I abstain.
I was gonna, yeah, all those opposed?
Unless you know that they're red.
Any abstentions?
I do.
That's why he's on abstention. If you're not there, you shouldn't abstain, because you can't.
I'm sure he was watching.
Yeah.
He was watching, that's right.
He was definitely watching. All right, new business. Uh, we have the fiscal year 2023 Water Sewer Storm Raider Rate, Storm Water Rate Update. Ooh, that was a tongue twister. Paul, come on up, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Great to be back.
It's like, it's like old times, Bob. Yeah, sitting here, missed my seat over there, but you know, whatever.
Yeah.
Anyway, um, just want to get some reassurance from the, um, Select Board slash Water and Sewer Commissioners on, on water and sewer rates and the implementation. The history is that, uh, when, when a fiscal year's rate was voted by the board, it was always, um, implemented on the first billing of the fiscal year. So, prior to the quarterly billing, there was a semi-annual billing. That semi-annual billing normally went out, um, in late August or early September, but the consumption was mainly in the prior fiscal year, say March through, um, roughly August 1st or, you know, the end of July, sometime in August. Um, but anyway, that consumption was mainly in the prior fiscal year. The implement of the new rate went on that bill. So now we're, I was, um, asked by the DPW, since they're the ones who do the billing, you have a situation now where the quarterly billing is very straightforward, and all three months of this next billing. And all three months of this next billing are in the prior fiscal year. So I'm looking for reassurance that we would continue on the same pattern that we had in the past, that we would implement the FY '23 water and sewer rates as voted by the water and sewer commissioners, even though all the consumption would be from the prior fiscal year and not have any type of overlap. I believe the board voted years ago to take that position when it was semi-annual billing. But with this change, again, I'm just looking for some reassurance that the board wants to continue with that practice. If the board decided to implement a practice where they would not implement the new fiscal year rates until the consumption started or the next billing that went out in November, let's say, there would be a small financial impact. You know, the board voted a FY '23 rate on the assumption that that FY '23 rate would be billed for the four quarterly bills that go out in the fiscal year. And again, you know, that's the past practice, but if the board wishes to change it, now is the time to change. I'm just looking for reassurance on which way the board wants to go.
If we don't do anything, if we make no motion at all, does it stay the way it's always been?
I would have to go down to the same, we would continue with the past practice that the new rate as voted by this board would be implemented with the first billing in FY '23, which would go out in August or so.
As far as Steve got a question before, Mark. Go ahead, Mark.
I'm just going to clarify what Paul said because it was actually Alex Grant, who was on the select board at the time, who commented that if people knew the rate was going up, would they change their usage pattern in the fourth quarter semiannually? And the consensus was that, especially now, most of that was in wintertime prior to lawn sprinkling anyway. You know, my sense, Paul, is that people would not have changed their water usage pattern. I think we need to keep to the, you know, billing with the fiscal 2023 rate at the next billing, even though the water usage was, some of it was in fiscal 2022. The other thing that concerns me is that even your memo says, but our storm sewer would still be for the 2023. And I don't think that we'd want to bill water for 2022 and storm water for 2023. I think we need to be consistent, and I suggest that the board keep it all at the 2023 rate, which I think Steve is what you were commenting on.
That was my thought as well. Anybody feel otherwise?
Paul, did you have any comment on that?
No, it would be my preference that you focus with that route also, it would be easier. And then, you know, financially, like I said, it doesn't have a big swing financially, one way or another. But it would also be consistent with the water and sewer, or I'm sorry, with the storm water rates, which would go up, which historically have been billed in a fiscal year block, which kind of, that leads to one of the next issues that I have to bring up too with regard to the credits. But again, I would agree with that, with the assumption that people want to go with the new rate for the first billing cycle for FY '23.
Okay. So.
I don't think we need a motion. Our motion was, we implemented the rates effective 20, you know, within the new fiscal year. So that's where we're going to be unless we decide to change it.
Okay. Now, the other issue being, just as more of an FYI, that when I first came on board, I had looked at the amount of revenue that we were getting in the storm water, for storm water fees. And it was, it was way above what we had anticipated. And going back and looking back, when the quarterly billing came into play, the implementers, and I don't know exactly who was involved, but they tried to put the same billing cycles on the water, on the storm water, as was with the water and sewer. And that was, that was not the case, that the implementation of the storm water was always on a fiscal year basis. It was billed out twice a year for 12 months and so on and so forth. So when they went and they implemented the quarterly billing and they did the cycles, the first cycle was billed at six months, then it was billed at three months, and I think it was billed at two months, and then three and three. So in total, there were 14 months billed in FY '22 for what should have been only 12 months. We're not talking a lot of money per resident, but we're looking to credit every resident basically two months that they were overbilled in FY '22 to credit them in the early part of FY '23 for what is known as the ERUs, or billed, ERU is $5.55. It was $5.55 last fiscal year, but we would credit every resident who was billed that one ERU per month. I think it's $11.10. And then likewise, the commercial would also be getting a credit on their bill, depending on the number of ERUs that they're billed at.
Does this affect the budget we voted on at town meeting at all?
No, it doesn't, because what we're going to have is a very big surplus in FY '22. But our FY '23 revenues will be down because of this little credit. But overall, when you look at both fiscal years, it balances out.
There's money we shouldn't have had anyway. Okay.
So Paul, when that first quarterly billing came out, actually, the first bill that came out was actually a two-month bill, if you recall, right? And I recall that, that for some reason, the fixed charges for water and sewer, the meter charges, if you will, were misbilled. And I thought at the same time, because I was the one who identified it, and sent that, said also for storm water. So the correction that was made the next, because there was a correction made.
For those, yeah.
It was just made for the, for potable water and sewer, and not for storm.
That is correct. That's my understanding also.
Okay. Because I know we identified that it was incorrect. I just didn't realize that there was not a correction made for all three.
Right. And again, it stuck out like a sore thumb with the amount of revenue that we took in for FY '22 for storm water.
Right, okay, so.
Same issue, though.
Okay, so the proposal is that now in FY '23, because you can't accrue those things, we're actually going to give a credit against FY '23 revenue? But the credit's going to hit FY '23 revenue?
Correct.
So FY '23 revenue will be short by two months, if you will.
It'd be short by two months, but again, the large surplus in FY '22 will make up for that little shortfall in FY '23.
But I thought that we budgeted for that storm water utility revenue to pay for an increasing percentage of the storm water utility operating budget in the DPW.
You did.
So will that operating budget then have a shortfall? Because we can't carry over the '22 surplus into the '23?
No, it operates as an enterprise fund, so the surplus in '22 will carry forward into '23. It will not carry forward as revenue, but it will be carried forward as surplus or, you know, retained earnings at the correct term.
Right, but when we, when we have the operating budget for the storm waters portion of the DPW, okay? That, that operating budget, and I think we're 50% or 48% or so.
I think it's a little over 50% that you're billing out for FY '23.
Right, so that, that's going to be paid for out of the enterprise fund.
Yes.
So we can still, I guess the key question, we can still pay that same percentage of that portion of the, that department budget out of the, out of the, the fund?
Right. But what will happen on the books is that you're going to see a big surplus in FY '23. I'm sorry, a big surplus in FY '22. When you look at the revenue for FY '23, it's going to be short. But the combination of the two years, it's going to have a net effect of zero if everything worked out perfectly.
But unlike water and sewer enterprise funds, we don't generally have a retained earnings fund or aren't looking for some half million dollar kind of retained earnings fund in the storm water utility. We're just looking for it to support the storm water utility operations, right?
There is a storm water retained earnings that does have money in it. But because it's so new and because the revenues are so predictable, as opposed to a dry year or a wet year, there are big variance with water and sewer, that it doesn't generate the kind of operational variances like the water and sewer does.
But the bottom line is, we've got the money in the operating stabilization fund or the.
Yeah.
Not the.
Right, the retained earnings, surplus revenue, whatever you want to call it. You have it in surplus that will, again, negate the loss in FY '23.
How much money are we talking?
Altogether, it's probably $70,000 or $80,000. I mean, that's how much, that's how much of a surplus there is in FY '22 at this point in time. So I have to believe it's surplus revenue, so I have to believe it's an equal offset.
Anything else from the board?
Do we need a motion to adjust that?
I don't think so. It's more of an informational thing, we'll take care of it operationally.
Okay.
But, you know, again, if you're right, it did, with the fixed billing with the water and sewer, storm water should have been adjusted really at that point in time, but it did not. So we have to do it in FY '23.
So that adjustment will just be when they send out the bill, it's automatic?
Yeah, I don't want to say it'll be on the first bill, because there's a lot of data entry that has to be done. But by the November bill, you would see that reduced amount for your storm water fee on that bill. So it's more than likely the November bill that you will see that credit applied to it.
So per household, I'm wondering what the.
It's $11.10 per house, for a resident, because they're all billed at one ERU. That's the amount per, for a residential user.
I'm just wondering if maybe we could contact each household and say, it's $11. Would you donate this to a fund? Maybe some households would, and it could be a way to generate some money for the town.
You know, I mean, we could send out a, within the water and sewer bill, some type of note in there. But probably have, you know, it'd be easier for them just to cut a check, quite honestly.
Yeah, true. You can't credit some accounts and not others. You got to either credit them all or credit none of them, because it's a two-thirds credit.
We're a very giving town, so I figured I'd ask.
Yeah, no, I mean, there are places that you can, you know, I don't know if it's on, I forget if it's on the motor vehicle excise tax bill or if it's on the real estate tax bill. I think it might be one of those two that you can have a check off that goes to the veterans. The Veterans in Need has a little spot there that you can donate an extra dollar or something. You know, that adds up.
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome, thanks.
Nice to see you.
Yeah, I'm going to abstain, Paul.
He's only working two days a week.
I got more jobs now than I had in my whole career, prior to this, for 40 years. Too many part-time jobs.
Well, we're glad you could fit us in. Thank you.
It's too bad we really thrive with a live audience, I found. It's okay. All right, further new business, Alden Estate. Just Lynn is not here, I'll read this to us. John Alden, a resident of the town, provided for a bequest to the town on his death in 2019. His will provided for distributions to various town departments with significant restrictions on the use of those funds, adding three seconds to a traffic light, et cetera. His surviving spouse challenged distributions as she had been omitted from the will. On behalf of the town, town council engaged in lengthy negotiations with opposing council. A resolution has been reached wherein the estate will distribute $110,000 to the town with no restrictions on its use. While this is a slight reduction of the total amount that could have been awarded by a court through litigation, the cost of pursuing those amounts would be prohibitively expensive in light of this offer. It also removes the potential issues surrounding the restrictions on the use of those funds. As a result, the recommendation is that the select board vote to accept the gift of $110,000 from the estate of John Alden in the context of this settlement of the estate and authorize the town manager to execute any documents necessary for effectuating this transaction.
So I'd like to make a motion to the select board accept the gift of $110,000 from the estate of John Alden.
Second.
Any discussion? Mark?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, well, in terms of, I made the motion, so. Yeah, the only thing I would, it would be interesting for the board to see some of the significant restrictions that he had. Because if there's any way that we could still meet some of those, you know, within reason. You know, I think that would be only fair to look at those.
I'll address that.
Yeah. Oh, I haven't seen him. I have not.
No, I don't know what they are.
My conversations with Lynn before, you know, the prep for this meeting was, we don't want to go there. Basically, the recommendation was.
I think we should look at them. I think every member of the board should have the right to look at them. I don't think one person should make that decision. This is a person who left us in his will, I think we should look at them. And I think we can make a good decision on it, you know, but I think that's my position.
Mark?
Yeah, I guess my question is, where does this money go? Is it just, now is it just going to the general fund and it comes out as free cash at the other end? Or is there restrictions that we can put on it? Or, you know, it's a gift as opposed to revenue? I don't know what the distinction is between that, but clearly, it's a gift. And so, you know, can we designate it? Can the town, will it be put in a separate? I mean, my sense is that once you get it, it just goes into the general pool, right?
Well, I think we get it, and then we ask Lynn, what are you going to do with it? But it's.
Right. You know, but unless you keep in mind that it's, here's a separate $110,000, there's an opportunity to do things outside the budget perhaps that we didn't want to. On the other hand, perhaps we can't, because money can only be spent by our legislature, which is the town meeting, right? So if it's not a budget, you know, now we can hold it and say, next year, let's put it in the, or put it in the fall town meeting warrant to spend that money on something. But I think we need to decide where, if we want that money to go anywhere other than the general fund, where we, because I got to tell you, if we put out a call, hey, we got $110,000, we're going to get a date of potential ideas.
Right, but I think it's, I think the first thing is, let's accept the money. Secondly, that's fine.
Yeah. I will defer to town council on this. Probate litigation is something I didn't even touch. It's so expensive, it's so time consuming. At the end of the day, we could come, if a good outcome for us could be, we get the money with restrictions. And then that's not, if the will is honored, then we're back, or even worse position than we are now. So if town council has recommended we take it, accept it, you can go however you want. But I think that that is probably the way, the way we should do it.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should take the money, no doubt about that. And I don't think we should go on any litigation, but knowing the request of the deceased who gave the money to the town, you know, may give us some guidance. You never know, we could get lucky.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote?
Yeah.
All those in favor? Next item is to appoint town council for fiscal year 2023. We need to make appointments for town council and labor council. And the current town council is Doherty Wallace, Pillsbury and Murphy, PC. And the labor council is currently Sullivan Hayes and Quinn LLC. Do we have a motion to appoint town council?
I move that we appoint Doherty Wallace, Pillsbury and Murphy, PC for town council.
Your second?
I will, I made that motion, I think we should do it. But I think at one point, we could put this thing out for bid, what basically no one's bidding on these particular contracts these days is what the scoop is, so.
I'm sure that's the.
Well, that's what town manager told me. I mean, so given that situation, I think it should be investigated. But, you know, for this particular point in time, it makes the most sense us to get it done. Because I think it's, you know, two choices, and no one's putting out requests.
It's a very specialized type of law, especially out here. So I think we're lucky we have somebody who's local that can do it. Out east, there's more, but it is unfortunately very limited.
I mean, I think the world of Pillsbury Wallace and Jesse Veltcher-Timber, he's doing, he's doing a great job. But we had made a commitment many years ago that we'd go out to bid no less than every third year, you know, just to know what we're bidding on. I mean, this is a, if you will, a no-bid contract, and that just goes against my nature. Not to say that we want to do it. It's been, Steve, it's been at least three years since we've gone out to bid. It's probably been four or five. And, you know, I appreciate that going out to bid is expensive to do. And, and, you know, I, I appreciate that going out to bid is expensive to do, or certainly time-consuming, because you got to write up a bid package. You can't just say, hey, guys, who wants to bid on it? And you're not likely to get a lot of bids, and I'll tell you right now, a couple of bids we'll get will all be from the eastern part of the state. We'll get Copman and Page, and we'll get a couple others that, that represent towns in the eastern part of the state. And we'll probably end up with who we get anyway, because we'll find out that Copman and Page bills it, you know, $1,500 an hour, and Dory Wallace bills it Springfield rates. But I still have this impression that, that we owe it to the town to go out for bids, whether it's this contract or the labor law. And, and Sullivan and Hayes, they've done a, they've been our labor lawyers for 20 years or 25 years, and they do a great job. But I still think we have an obligation to the town to ask.
Well, on this one, for, for both, although we'll talk about later in a second, because we're in the middle of contracts. But I'm going with what the town manager basically said, you know, this is, given what's going on at this point in time, she would recommend we just, without, she understands that we should go out to bid, but this is, she would, I think she would be very happy to say, let's get this done today. But I agree, it should be done, just not at this point.
And we've said that every year for the last seven years, and we don't go out to bid. And, and, you know, you can, I'm, I'm, I know where we're going to end up, and I know, and I think we ought to end up with who we're ending up with, but we ought to let them know that this isn't a lock. You know, it's, it's a contract, and it's a, and it's, and it's also, it's not a $500 contract. It's a lot of money, so.
How long have they been counsel for?
Pillsbury, Dave Martel was it for 25 to 30 years before, before he retired five years. It's a long time. But, but we went out for bid many times in that period of time, you know. And does going out for bid hold the prices? I don't know that it does, but it certainly gives some people, and among them myself, a sense that at least we're doing our fiduciary job with, for the town and making sure that, that the local guys are the best guys. And, and they generally are. I mean, I, it's not, it's not like, oh, they're doing a terrible job, let's go find another, you know, town council. They're not. They're doing a great job. I just think that we need to, you know, this is part of our job, is going out for bids from time to time.
I agree with you in general, given Lynn's stance on this one. She was here for, speak with us, but.
So when are we going to do it, Josh?
I'm doing it next year.
That's what we said last year. And I, and I refer to the minutes from last year, because I looked at them. Next year, we'll do it. So now we're saying we'll do it next year.
Okay, but now we're here later, no one did it. And that's on us as well. We have to push it. So we'll get it done next year, and we just have to do better.
That's fine. I mean, I'm only one vote, so I'm welcome to be, I'll vote, and like you said, I wouldn't, wouldn't be disappointed with these, this group as our, as our town council. I think they're great. I just think we need to go out for a bit.
All those in favor? All those opposed? And we have a motion for labor council.
Yeah, I'm going to read, Vice Sullivan Hayes and Quinn LLC for current labor council.
Second.
And this one, this is a little more relevant in that we're still in the process of negotiations, which have not been concluded, so I don't think we really want to switch labor council in the middle of the negotiations. But just like last one, should go out to bid at some stage of the game.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? All right, next up is approve the fiscal year 2023 select board meeting schedule. Mike, you want to speak on this?
Yeah, I gave a few options just for you guys to review, just in case you had any thoughts on switching anything up. Because as you can see, most of the Mondays, we end up meeting on Tuesdays because of the holidays. So I just thought I would give you guys some options as to look at something new. You could go with the current schedule, or you could, you know, have a discussion about any possibilities of moving to a different date. So I'll leave that up to you guys.
Tom?
Mike, first, I'd like to say that this is the first time this has shown up, that we could look at, maybe switch it into a Tuesday or Wednesday, and that's refreshing. But my opinion, I think people in the town are used to Monday nights. I think for, when I look at my lifestyle where I'm at, Monday nights worked a lot better for me. And having to switch to Tuesdays is not a big problem for me. The only question I had is, is there two Juneteenth holidays? I don't understand why June 21st, Wednesday, is put down there.
Because if we were going to go to a, so if we were going to go to a Tuesday meeting schedule, we would conflict with the school committee, that meeting, and the same thing would happen this year. So I moved it to Wednesday for the school, for the Tuesday schedule.
Oh, I see, because. I see, yes.
Juneteenth, the observation of Juneteenth.
Mondays, the Juneteenth.
On Monday, so we would have to meet on a different day than last.
Ah, we can't fault that.
You know, to avoid running into the same issues we had this year, we could, you know, sort that out. But like I said, it's up to you guys.
It's not how I wanted to plan the first day of summer next year, but I guess we don't have any choice.
For my tennis schedule, I'd love to switch to another day, but I'd throw everything else into chaos, so if everyone else is fine with Monday.
Steve, what do you think?
Good luck.
It's a story how many, I mean, there are eight, you know, what is it, in the month of, there's one month, there's not much. February, next, next February, there's no Monday meeting. I mean, it's, so the town might be used to it, but they're going to keep tuning in on Monday night, and we're not going to be there, so.
Well, the next Monday, they'll catch you.
Yeah.
I support, I support, thank you, Mike, but I support sticking with the Monday.
Just running with the school committee meetings is the only issue.
You see that, and that, that's, that's a big issue.
So we have to vote on this, Mike?
Yeah, just vote to approve the current schedule, if that's what you want.
I'll move we approve the current schedule of meeting, first and third Mondays, except for when it's a holiday.
I'll second it. All right, all those in favor? Really would love to, but I won't. Let's keep my mouth shut. Anyway, and we have a discussion on select board liaison assignments fiscal year 2022. So we have a lot of spots that are emptied, and we will have more that are, that are vacant when Steve leaves.
Like this, well, this is done to a step, this was more, really, this to, I think it was more to come back next time, right?
Yeah, it was more of just kind of like, look, take a look at it, see if there's anything you want to switch up for the future. And you could have a conversation or, you know, vote at the next meeting.
Yeah, and Dan, I know you might be interested in some things in particular, so let's take a look at this, especially that are empty or Steve are leaving and.
The only one I'm surprised, I think capital planning should have some, but that, that factor is, I think it was Mark was on capital planning, capital plan. And Mark Strange was on.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
That seems, that's a committee that's, we really ought to have somebody, I don't know.
Josh, I, my only comment, I think it takes a while, as Tom will show, you know, all of us to see that. It takes a while to build up and understanding what the committees are doing in our report. And unless there's a real reason to move, I mean, I encouraged Dan to pick up where some of the things Steve was on or something like that, but to say, gee, you don't need to do, you know, the COA anymore, Tom, you're now getting to the point where you, you got it down, and, and you've got, you understand what's going on. So I think we'd make a, you know, what we need to do is fill in holes here. And, you know, where Steve is, and I think the big ones, like you said, are the, you know, are capital planning, perhaps the school committee. I'm not sure the registrar of voters is a, is a critical committee that we have to deal with.
The building demolition committee might not be the most relevant one, they meet once a year, because that's a tough one.
But, but I think, but you're right, I think capital planning is important.
Yes.
I agree with what you said there, Mark. I, when I got put on as liaison to committees last year, it was very, especially during COVID times, it was very hard to get a connection, and I'm still working on that. So it'd be great to continue on as we are, so I'll talk about that.
Are you suggesting maybe I fill in the blanks for where, yeah, and I like some of the ones that Mark was on as well, so.
Well, the blanks, but it'd be, Steve will be off of some as well, so there, that would be a lot. So there may be some more to parcel up.
And that's kind of why we talked about, you know, having it just be a discussion, and then we bring it back at the next meeting so that we can fill in some of the blanks as well.
The other committee that's looking for liaison is the housing committee. Mike, if you put that on, I know Dave Marinelli is on the housing committee, is looking for somebody from the select board. I think they want to get more active as well.
All right, I'll add that to the list. Thank you.
All right, finally, on correspondence, just like to note for the town that Verizon paid our $1,000 fine for putting up the poll on Bliss without permission. And so kudos to us for doing the fine.
Well, I think the kudos goes to Mark Gold, who suggested a $1,000 fine. And maybe we should buy him a new, a new name tag or something.
There's another, there was another correspondence I thought that was something we wanted to, yeah. There was a letter from the county of Plymouth.
Yeah.
And I, and I don't know why that was included, just for people at home. The county of Plymouth, apparently, from what I could gather from this letter, runs a traffic fee payment program for a whole bunch of surrounding communities. Obviously, this is a letter to Longmeadow soliciting our, our, you know, whether we want to do our, give our traffic collection up to the, this county of Plymouth traffic collection group. I got to turn to Lynn and say, is that something, you know, how many, how much traffic collection do we have here? Is it revenue we want to lose or whatever?
It's all those meters, those.
Mike, is this just on here? Because it was addressed to us?
Yes, because it was addressed to us.
It's just on, it was addressed to us. I can't.
Okay, so there's no.
No conversation.
Oh, okay.
No, when I, when I saw Park Mobile on here, I said, well, if we ever start paying for parking in Long.
No, it just, it was addressed to the whole select board.
Well, Tom, if they can get any revenue out of it, we'd love to share it.
But I just didn't understand where that was coming from.
Okay, anything else from the board?
Yeah, I just want to read a note, as checking, this popped up from Alaxo that said, just a correction that, that Steve had earlier said Pat Carney was the first person to complete the Mass Association Conservation Commission courses. And the fundamental conservation commissions actually, previous commissioners completed the course and were recognized in a letter, congratulations, the select board, included Steve Gazillo and Peter Bouvier. So just a correction there.
Real-time correction.
Real-time correction.
I apologize to those two gentlemen.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor? Thank you, everyone.
Good night.